Call to order, so to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
For what call?
Bournard, here.
Mr. Fernandez, here. Mr. Green, here. Ms. McNair?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Got four. I don't think anybody's on right now.
No.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move unanimously. This is, um, you have a motion for, um.
I nominate Sal Bournard as the chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guess I can vote it. All right, I nominate Jerry Paradise as vice chair.
Second.
Second. Discussion? For the first?
Aye.
Hey, you're up, Kevin.
Quick and clean, sir. Congratulations to both of them. So, um, that three in your packet is the official final report. Berlin High School renovated new project is officially closed. Right to page six. The final amount that they owed was three million nine hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred nine to close out the project. We received that money last Tuesday. So that money is in the bank, project is closed. The only thing we are waiting on, and this is just administrative, it's right to destroy all the records that it's done. There's about half of the engineering vault and probably another two hundred files out in the engineering office. It was, uh, well, I mean, agree with the results or agree with the project or not, to start with the high school that was at risk of losing accreditation and end up at this point. One thing I will also point out, there were a couple of pieces of paper in addition to the packet, and the one on the top says breakdown of VHS renovated is new final payout. This.
No.
So there's three behind your packet. This breaks down really the three components. So we submitted a request of about six hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional reimbursement based on the original forty-seven percent and based on what we had calculated. Uh, we used the list of ineligible provided by the construction management company. And, uh, they were conservative and they admitted, we said, we're going to be conservative because you always wanted to win and end up being surprised in a good way rather than disappointed. I have been estimating that they were probably going to take some things out at about three hundred to five hundred thousand, you may recall a few months ago. Again, being conservative to say we're going after them. We ended up with just about the six hundred fifty thousand, but we also ended up with four hundred eighty-seven thousand of what the town had applied and thought would be ineligible, we ruled eligible. Which is certainly quite positive, unexpectedly positive. I mentioned in the last meeting that Ashley Dorsey, finance director or director of finance and operations in the board of that had noted a paragraph during one of the, uh, board of state board of education presentations that talked about participation in open choice, and one of the things the state's trying to do is encourage participation or at least retain what they've got. So they offered to increase the percentage reimbursement for towns based on open choice enrollment as compared to total enrollment. And based on the numbers that Ashley pulled together over the course of the entire project time, which was several years. Um, the reimbursement rate went from forty-seven point one four percent, which was just the reimbursement the town had received back in, I believe it was twenty ten or twenty eleven about the fourth. It added about three and a half percentage points or fifty point six two percent for the entire project. That's almost just as you can see, just shy of two point nine million dollars more added up, getting you to three nine eighty-two. In addition, we had set aside fifty-five thousand dollars to bring the project management firm back in to help with these audits. These audits are time-consuming cumbersome, knew we were going to do that. Um, based on the request, um, basically Ashley and I were able to flip them. The number of files was quite extensive. They wanted invoices for every vendor, final invoice, and for many of those were FFNE, so furnitures, fixture, and equipment. And several of the other vendors, they were just straight up invoice after invoice. It wasn't a typical project, so we ended up opening up a Dropbox subdirectory and having eighteen subs and all kinds of files in there. But in the, in the long short of it is, we didn't pay anything for anybody's. We just did it ourselves. And so that's another fifty-five thousand in the project fund that now is not needed. You have a closed project with four million thirty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty dollars of cash in the bank. We have a proposal, draft proposal right now. I've been working up the numbers, talking with the town manager on a proposal of what to do with this money. I'm definitely, as you did last year, gear it towards fun time items. Dom, capital, um, not operating because this definitely will not repeat now. Um, what we're going to do is we have the capital meeting tomorrow, as we talked about, so we want to shore up. Are there any items that are pushed off? We are also asking all the department heads to put their priority lists. So prioritizing, just like last year, one is risk of people or property. Two is, we really should do it, but if we have to push it a year, we can. Three, um, we don't fund threes, so we just kind of say, you put it on there and we will note it, it will move up the line as it gets older. From that, we want to do a final recommendation. So the plan is to come back to you guys on December ninth with an actual formal proposal of what to do with all of this money. Including the four hundred thousand plus of debt savings that I had called out on the risks and opportunity sheet. And take your feedback, take that same presentation to the council, which if you aren't aware, they moved their meeting from the ninth to the sixteenth. So their meeting will no longer conflict with the following. Present that to the council and then come back in January to the council meeting, which is that a week before yours, and start asking for some votes. So we're trying to give you guys an opportunity to digest all of this money. Come in December with a proposal that you guys have a month, roughly a month to kind of digest that and think about uh, the capital plan, which you guys will see that in the videos, they'll have some paper documents, be able to think about all the capital. You may have a different priority or prioritization. So that's kind of the plan of what to do with this money. Um, great news. And, um, I don't present any questions.
Like from what I understand, and you know, I read the audit report that you and Ashley and your team did a wonderful job. So, congrats.
Thank you. It was a tremendous amount of work trying to go back. The most difficult task, to be quite honest, is we only really had one person left in employment who was on the project during the time. And he was involved in actually at the schools doing work, so the entire finance, the entire board of that team, everything was new. So we're trying to backtrack through other folks' files. The project manager was wonderful with us about two years ago when he was retiring. But we didn't, fortunately, we didn't need to reengage him, so, um, you know, it was a great team effort and I think a great result for the town. And a great high school.
Yeah. Okay, item four, go through the, uh, schedule for the finance.
This is just, you know, each year I come out in, in November and really it's updating what we had this year. So unless you see something that you wanted to change from this year, I know at one point we talked about moving the meetings Thursday, so decided to leave it here. But I try to do this so you have an opportunity before you vote in December. Um, we do have to get the town clerk of the meeting, everybody does, not just us. So this is an opportunity for you to go back, check your schedules and see if there's anything you want to adjust. Um, the same thing is true with the budget calendar, that is essentially the same C plans. I think it worked well in council chambers, so the plan would be to try to use council chambers. I think it's a, a better setup for doing these meetings than the board of that meeting rooms, the nature of what we have. Plan is again to do the first meeting as a full rollout, board of that and all that. I know it's a lot of information, but, um, trying to give the information in advance if you want to pick up the packets. Post all the information online and, uh, but hopefully it's an opportunity to digest everything and go through. So, again, just an opportunity for you to review before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
So we don't have a, we don't vote on it now?
No. No. Just in my, the meeting dates, where, where are we relative to the town council meeting? It's the same week or? No, you are generally, council is generally weeks one and three of every month and you're week two. There are a couple of instances where the council has their meetings. Um, December has historically been probably the month of more conflict. So if you were to think, maybe I want to move a meeting out a week, that could be the one. But like this year, there was a conflict from somebody on the council, they asked if they could move their meeting out a week. And so you might move it and then end up with a conflict anyway. We get the vast majority of the time, one and three for council and two few where it's been.
Sometimes I feel that we're like out of sync, like they're voting on stuff that we should have heard about before they voted on. Seems to be backwards, because if we come in and say no, money's not there or this stuff isn't sound, it should go to PBC or whatever, whatever. They've already voted on it, seems like.
Well, if you were to vote no, what happens?
Backwards.
Yeah, if you were to vote no at that point, what happens is it would be, um, you can either go back to council or you join me.
I understand what you're saying, but it's backwards. It should come to us first.
I don't think so.
No, why?
It has to go through a legislative body first.
Yeah. Even if it's economically not feasible or financially not feasible.
No, that's, that's why we're here.
That's the book.
After that, yeah. The idea about it was if a legislative body sets strategic priorities for the town, so it's not a strategic priority. And you wouldn't even need to vote. Um, hopefully we're not out of sync regularly. I know there were a couple of instances where we were, um, in, in particular, Griswold, you know, was one of the, it's just the timing of getting final numbers, working it through PBC, council didn't work. The hope would be the next presentation, you're going to hear about what to do with the capital and what that means for bonding. So you'll be able to see actually before then what the thoughts are around bonding. Um, you'll be able to see pension. I have the valuation numbers for the pension plan, both the closed and the least. So hopefully by the next meeting, now hopefully, we will at the next meeting, at least be able to lay out for you guys where we see those things going, and then the only other open items would be operating, town and board of that. Hopefully, the idea, we're trying to move this into December. We can try to use some of that surplus money for votes in January and then feeds into the budget. And if you have real objections, we can then incorporate those or necessarily move. Um, the goal is to try to make the budget process a little more fluid in March so that there's no, shouldn't be any surprises.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. On item six.
Um, this I, I mentioned to you last meeting would be coming forward. Uh, the town several years ago had a project manager position in public works. He was, and correct me if I'm wrong, or if you have anything to add. Um, he was instrumental as the high school project took off. Unfortunately, the gentleman became ill and then passed away. Uh, the position was not fat filled directly and hasn't been filled since that time. With the number of projects that are on the table, especially the number of projects the council has referred to the public building commission has become a daunting task, especially for the public works director. The town has four bridge projects coming up, Glen Streets, Cruz, Kensington, Edgewood. In addition to road paving that we're trying to do sidewalk work, all of which the public works director oversees. So this position is designed to, um, provide more direct day-to-day coverage. And it might do maybe everything from preparing for the PBC or fielding questions to site visits at a fifty-five steel boulevard or police station, which are both fairly easy from here, but it could be Griswold and Hubbard HVAC, roof projects and the like. Sal had requested, so the second item in your list was proposing project manager position in public works. It's costing out. We're, we're planning to post this position as a mid-manager level B. So for those who aren't familiar with contract, probably most people, there's A, B, C, and D. A being the lowest, pay scale, D being the highest for all of our managers. B tends to be, uh, mid-manager positions that aren't department heads. C tends to be mid-managers who are department heads. E's, uh, there's very few of those, they're very neat positions. As tend to be more, uh, junior positions, maybe for specific masters or certification that they have, but there'd be more, um, more junior positions themselves. So this is projected to be a level B position, eighty to a hundred thousand. We've also been fortunate enough or unfortunate, depending how the process goes, that a couple of surrounding communities are actually posting for the same position. And this is the pay range they're posting as well. So we do feel like this is a reasonable position. Given, um, given where we are now, council has approved this, so you approve it, you have to by charter approve the position. We have funding within the budget, so we're not asking for additional funding. We will come back later to ask for a transfer. We can't do that till April first, but we will fund the position and then transfer later. Um, we're expecting a start date of January twelfth. It's going to be as soon as we can get someone in, maybe later than that. Um, I only picked that because it was much easier to do the calculations to start the paper. Um, given where we sit today, the, the job description is in here, we're ready to go to the street, but it's got to be out there for at least two to three weeks. So you're talking mid-December before we can pick candidates, interview. So with that in mind, sorry. Um, the low of that, you basically the twelfth, you have basically twelve pay periods in this fiscal year. That's where the thirty-six nine twenty-three to forty-six one fifty-four come from, is just the math. There is a policy in the town where there's a one-year waiting period to participate in the pension. Anybody hired after twenty fifteen falls under that, except for top managers, town manager. Um, so there won't be any pension match impact this fiscal year and realistically for half of next fiscal year. Their social security, Medicare, seven point six five percent, the town line, that's the township. Health insurance, we don't take money back from the health insurance fund if someone leaves and we don't contribute more if there's some, if there's a new position in there. So we don't actually put that in the first year, but it would be in next year's budget. The good part is if we're able to hire in January, we won't be speculating what the person could take. We will know what the person took for health insurance, which is, is nice to have. All up for this year, it's basically between forty and fifty thousand dollars. The plan is to move up to forty thousand dollars from the professional services account. You may recall that during the budget hearing, we talked about, uh, Jim Mahoney was reducing his hours from about nineteen hours a week to about, hey, we're just going over the, the, uh, uh, from nineteen hours a week to eight hours a week, but we kept money in that budget line because we knew something would need to be done. And this is that something we're trying to fill. So we're proposing to take four to up to forty thousand from there. There's forty-eight two oh five in that account. We want to leave a little money in that account in case grant opportunities for, you know, sidewalk grant that we just had. Jim has also been involved in a couple of the open space projects, the Fontanella property and the, um, potential acquisition of the homestead that was at the council meeting for last meeting. So if we need to have Jim for more than eight hours, we want to leave a little money in that account. And then we do have salary continuation. This is an account that we have in the budget. If somebody leaves and the town manager needs to hire someone temporary, needs to promote somebody. We also have in the mid-manager contract that if a mid-manager boss is out, either ill or leaves, and the next level down steps in, they by contract receive an increase on their pay. If they're covering for a top manager who leaves, they get an increase that will hire. So this account is designed for these types of things in the middle of the year. Um, typically the town manager has discretion to do this, but we want to incorporate it here because it is a new position. And then lastly, within the townwide account, we have social security for contract negotiations that haven't been settled and other things. So we would fund the balance that way. So we can absorb this within the current budget. Obviously, you know, I'll state the obvious that that's for the balance of this year. The full year will be in next year's budget, so there would be an increase that you can see next year. Uh, but I think everybody who's been involved in this project, the sheer volume of projects that have gone to the PBC and are advantaged there. This is a huge value that I think will pay itself back many times. So I think you're going to see more results like you're seeing from the high school project, maybe not millions of dollars extra, but successful projects if you fill this position. And that'll shut up another town manager, but it's his fault.
Yeah, no, thank you, Kevin. You, you know, hit the nail on the head. And I know I watched the last meeting where this was discussed, so you know, and I know Denise, you know, this was a position that existed years ago. We're looking to bring it back for, we haven't stated a sheer number of projects. But also we still have Jim Mahoney. And so freeing up Jim, who's only working one day a week, to be able to focus on grant work and applying for more grants, I think makes sense. Because right now, um, we have just so many projects that are falling on public works department as well as even the town manager's office. I've been involved in, in enough, like the Steel Boulevard project, we have weekly calls and and there's just so much that having a project manager, especially with the grants that we have on sidewalks right now. We, we just received another connectivity grant this week for eight hundred thousand dollars, which is fantastic. But it's, it's just a lot because that goes to PBC and, and that's going to be more for, um, for our current staff to, to work through. So it is an increase, but we have the work. I, I do see the value in this, and I wouldn't put forward a position if I didn't think that, um, there was a real need for this, especially mid-year. I'll open it up to questions.
Mark?
Yeah.
Um, I don't doubt the, the need for the position. I'm looking at the, uh, the, uh, job. Yeah, the, the duties and qualifications and, uh, I'm seeing here that the, uh, under special skills and requirements. The only requirement is they have an associate degree in civil, environmental, mechanical engineering, business administration and/or several years of practical experience with a municipality, blah, 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 blah. And four years of increasingly responsible engineering assistance work, including construction experience. Seems to me we're, we're shooting pretty low. Shouldn't, I, I mean, aren't we looking for a real engineer here? I mean, I look at some of the, the things that they're supposed to do. And they're inspecting public works projects such as roads, bridges, dams, bridge drainage, storm sewers and sidewalks. Um, perform inspections on the following, but not limited to drainage problems, property, street line, right-of-way determination, blah, blah, blah. Uh, I'm just questioning, it just seems like we're not asking for a lot of substance to the person we're putting into a very responsible position.
Yeah, let me answer that. So I, I worked on the job description with our public works director, Micah Hearn. We actually basically, we looked at other towns because Berlin's not unique in this. Uh, Weathersfield has, uh, sought a project manager very recently. Bristol just posted just last week for the same, uh, types of positions. So, and yes, ideally, we'd love to get someone with a P. I mean, if we, if we could do that, that would be great. However, the range that we're talking about, it's, this is a mid-manager position, just class, and it's a class D. So it's between eighty and a hundred thousand. And to get the credentials is, I mean, believe me, I know how hard is it, how hard it is to find a public works director. And you're paying nearly double that and, and you're still coming up empty. And, and so, um, we did look at, uh, that could be potentially what you're talking about, like a senior project manager, which would then fall under class C, which would be like a hundred to a hundred twenty thousand dollar position. And so, uh, one of the needs though, it's, it's, um, it's also like compliance reporting. And it's also running the, uh, meetings. It's not just engineering work. So, um, we, we need somebody that's going to be able to handle, uh, the tasks that Jim Mahoney is doing. And Jim Mahoney doesn't have those, those credentials either.
I know.
So, but he's been able to do a very good job for the town of Berlin for a very long period of time.
But, but, you know, I mean, here, here again, I, I see the problem there. He lives in Maine, how does he inspect the projects that are going on down here, like Steel Boulevard and, you know, all the rest of it?
We'll address that.
Yeah.
And you're exactly right. It can. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Somebody but to Jared, to your point, somebody to go out there and to, to check on, I mean, uh, we had an issue just last, a couple of weeks ago with Steel Boulevard. And Micah Hearn went out and it turned out that, uh, it was an issue with the, uh, soil that we were disposing. And we hit our, our limit for the soil. And it was, it was going to double the cost. And it turns out that they were throwing out soil or about to dispose the soil that they didn't need to. And so having a project manager that can be on site can help ensure that our public works director doesn't have to drive out at a moment's notice and drop everything because we have that. And so, uh, there's, you know, these are just things that I witnessed within the past year or so that I've been here. Um, the need for it, for it exists and, and yes, uh, I, you know, Jim has been working remotely for, for some time. And he's, he's done very good with, with what he's been able to do. But yeah, distance is a hurdle and he's not able to inspect everything. But he can write grants from Maine.
Oh, yeah.
And he's very, very good when it comes to the grants. So I'd like to have him be able to focus on, on getting more grant funding.
I don't have any problem with that end of it. Hey, my, mine is, you know, we're asking someone who could be probably like twenty-six years old out there inspecting these projects and is that really, you know, you say that you want him to do other things too, which, okay, but you know, it, it just seems to me we have in, in the duties, some stuff that's awfully complicated. Um, and, you know, is he really going to be doing those things or is that just, you know, is that just in here to, in case he can't?
Well, right.
I don't know, it just.
Is it fair to say?
I'd rather pay, I'd rather pay more.
Standards, that's not what.
Oh, yeah.
Those are, those are the.
Once advertised, you may see that this doesn't get response or, you know, so.
That is true.
Yes, they, if they really need help on inspecting and all those things, I'd rather give them the money to do the position that they really needed.
We're, and we're not trying to find entry level person for this job. If we have someone with experience, I would push to start them at a higher step. I mean, in, in all honesty, to Denise's point, we do need to post the position to see, because I am a little worried that every town is looking for the same type of person. And so we're competing against the Bristols, the, the Weathersfields and, and so, yeah, Berlin's got a lot to offer, but, uh, I don't know what the job market is, I haven't posted for a job like this, so.
You know, I mean, I had the, um, impression when I read the job description, I almost thought, if I didn't know what the title was.
Yeah.
I would have said deputy director, because there's a huge amount of responsibility in this stuff. Huge, you know, I mean, um, but, you know, but, but like you're saying, it's probably going to be selective a little, you know what I'm saying? But if I actually read it, yeah.
Was do you feel that there'd be potentially anybody on your staff already that couldn't move up into this, back to that? Have any of these skill sets, any of the worker bees?
We would have, uh, already transferred some duty, to be honest, if we had it. It's just our, our staff is maxed out with, uh, we have utilized our, our assistant planner for more grant writing. Uh, and, and they were actually the one, uh, that co-wrote the grant that we just received with Jim Mahoney. So we, we are, as far as grant writing, we're trying to, uh, get some more staff that has experience with that. But, uh, Jim's skills, if anything, I've been working with Jim mostly, so I've, I've been, I've learned quite a bit, uh, working with Jim who's back here. But, uh, also just to answer your, your question about, um, you know, the duties. We do have potential turnover within the public first department within the next several years. And so ideally we would be looking for a candidate that could move up. And so that, that's the why we, we purposely wrote the job description to have this wide, wide depth. So that if we get someone talented that we're trying to do, we can, we can utilize that to their fullest potential.
So aside from poaching from other towns, what, what is your likely source, like people, where, what jobs are they in today? Well, because you can't take anybody right out of school.
No.
So where, where would they be getting the experience?
Ideally, you could get someone from the private sector, certainly with this. Sometimes you never know when you post a position with, what someone's life circumstances are. I've gotten employees in the past that just, you know, maybe, uh, that they're working way too much overtime at their current job and they, they need better work-life balance. And so, so my, my philosophy is cast as bad as a net as possible. Get the applications on, you know, get them online, get them on CCM, get them everywhere that they can be seen. And then let's let HR do the reading and say, you know, and it's really easy to go through the resumes and you can pick out the unqualified ones very quickly. But at least as, and the more eyes that get, that see it, uh, hopefully the more applicants that we get. Because it is, again, I, I can't guarantee how we're going to do. I, I honestly don't know how we would do with the applicant, but we're hopeful that you have something for Jenny.
Wouldn't it be a little better to start with a little higher entry salary? Maybe put us above the. Maybe put us above the other towns and cities that are looking because, like Jerry said, this is a very complicated list of tasks. And I would rather pay somebody a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty thousand. Have them come in and do a good job than pay somebody eighty or ninety and be over the head day one. And now we're chasing our tails, spending a year finding out that this guy's a little over his head. Now what do you do? Historically, he ends up somewhere else and we keep him and hire another guy.
Yes. So it's a union position, but there is a a one-year uh period where if it doesn't work out, and we'll know quickly. And so we would be able to remove that that employee. I think it's worth going out with the eighty to a hundred range at first and testing the market. It but I'm not, we're not going to hire anybody that we don't believe is qualified.
Well, under the the maximum range on this position from a human perspective.
Yes.
In that category.
In that.
In the category.
Yeah, so what would happen is if we, if if, say, we go out and the applicant pool is is not sufficient. I would come back to you and and say, can we move it to a class C? And I and I think we, to your point, there there would be reason to do that. But I I think let's, this is in the range that other towns are going for for the project manager position. As I mentioned, senior project managers are typically like the hundred to a hundred thirty range. Um, and we could do that, but we we gotta remember, we do have a deputy director right now. And we have a a pub, you know, so we're trying to, we're trying to find that that sweet spot right now where uh someone can come in and get these tasks that are um that there is a need for. But.
So here here's my my issue with this. I'm looking at a page and a half of responsibilities. And I'm going to be more Jerry. I don't think in the first, in the instructions, if we think, oh, I can handle this. Hiring a senior to the position gives me, I think, gives me and probably these guys a lot more confidence, being able to do all these things. I've sat in a chair where I put responsibilities in front of a person twenty-five, twenty-six, and they look at me like I have five eyes because it's so much things to do. I can easily see someone coming in here with these credentials and be like, oh, my God, like, I can't, it's overwhelming. So if you're going to do this, my hope we're right. Like, if we need to go to a C, let's go to a C and make the position a senior position. Yes, we have the deputy. But obviously, like, looking at page and a half of responsibilities, that's we have the work, right?
We have the work. I'm sending to the board of finance, they're going to spend more money.
On the other, we're right the first time.
I I would say that I was concerned, but Ryan kind of eased the concerns with saying that he wasn't necessarily going to just take anybody. We would try it at this level, and if we don't get the proper applicants and the qualified people, then then we can maybe step it up. I don't, I mean, maybe unless.
We're not gonna, but I'm not looking at just fill it in. We're looking for the right candidate.
Do you do you not have the capability to advertise it as a mid-manager level B or a higher level, level C, depending upon qualifications?
I I guess I've I've gotten used to do that all the time. We advertise from associate engineer and engineer or senior engineer based on experience and qualification.
And we do, we do salary ranges.
Yeah. I I I've never dealt with the.
Yeah.
And that's the, and that's the complicated.
Yeah, what, one of the the things in the back of my mind is that, you know, if we do go and we hire someone who has, say, the minimum requirements and, you know, then we we start our merry way down, you know. And the only thing he ends up doing is compliance paperwork and and stuff like that. And not any of the meaty stuff in here where I think it would actually take time off of someone else's plate. I mean, there's a danger there, you know, that, you know, of course, that this is part of your overview. You know, we we have to make sure that that person's actually doing what's here and not a default position. Oh, he's not, can't handle that. So we'll just give him paperwork stuff to do, you know, and now we're paying a hundred thousand dollars for someone just to do paperwork and maybe we should have hired a clerk.
And then we hire another guy to replace that guy.
I don't know. That's that's why.
That's what I'm saying, which is historically how things work.
So if you do, if you do, if you augment the salary, right, and change the position to what the position is right off the bat, we're not going to be competing with Bristol or anybody else because a position comes, is that not the same position, right? Is that a project manager's a different position?
There there are senior project manager positions that we, it's just a different tier and say, wow, like, you still, you're always going to be competing with Avery.
Right, but my point is that you're not going to, or lack of benefit. So I apologize. So you're not going to be scraping the barrel.
I don't think we're.
I I don't think.
Yeah.
I I have confidence in the town manager to weed out those people that wouldn't be appropriate. And those that are more appropriate, if he finds that it's necessary to pay them more, then he's got to go through other things to make that happen. But I trust.
Uh huh. I'm I'm willing to give you a try. I just wanted to lay out what my, I just wanted to lay out my concerns with the way.
You said a position where you had a candidate, came in and there was a candidate from the from the interview process who was good. Went through the process and for personal reasons, that person decided not to take it and then you went back out. So if if we go out here and we don't get any candidates, I mean, qualifications, we're not going to just take the best of that group. We're going to say, okay, we're not taking anybody from this group and we're going to repost it. It might be reposting at the same level. I can tell you that our revenue collector was actually decided to apply the second time going out for the posting. Wasn't that we skipped her the first time? She didn't apply. She decided to apply the second time and she spent a home run. So sometimes it was, it's the classic phrase, you're better off going out a second time than hire somebody you don't want to hire. We will wait until it's the right person.
The risk or issue is yours. It's a matter of how critical it is to you to get somebody in as ASAP versus six months from now. So that's what you're playing with. If you want to take the risk that this might take six months versus two months, that's your risk. You're the boss.
We have to take that, you know, it's it's, the need is, the need is there, but it's not worth bringing in our candidate for. And and so that's been my philosophy throughout my time uh serving.
I don't think it's bringing in the wrong candidate because they're saying, don't hire the wrong candidate. But what's your, what's the probability if we were hired, getting a better candidate in a shorter period of time versus when you're going to have a smaller pool at this salary than you might get if it was larger or choice, be able to fill it earlier. But if you're willing to take that risk that it might take you six months to get those candidates, or you might have to come back and reiterate through this at a higher level. That's, it's your, you're the boss, you know, it's up to you.
The senior exact position instead of being eighty to a hundred, any more a hundred to a hundred.
Yeah.
Yep. So you've got that spot at the hundred where if you get somebody good, you can move them there. Or if that becomes a sticking point, you can come and say, maybe this person's really good and we go to C at one oh five or something. You're, you still have that spot in the range to spin between the two.
And people apply for jobs sometimes when they're overqualified and sometimes when they're underqualified. And so that's what I mean about casting as wide of a nap as possible because we want people to just apply. Let's take a look at your resume and let the town be the ones that are judging and we can, we can weed out. But yeah, no, we don't. We we want to be flexible, but we don't want to bring in somebody at the bare minimum.
This is interesting because, you know, I worked forty years at Northeast Utilities. I'm a, I was, am an engineer or whatever. I've been gone for twelve years and you could not fire anybody twelve years ago to do all this at eighty thousand dollars at Northeast Utilities. That's you know, this, this is like almost an engineer working towards a senior engineer, probably at the, in today's money, it's probably a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
We can also reassess the position if we're not getting the candidates we want. Should some of those be split to a clerk clerk position? Some of the concerns you have and say, you know what, maybe there are bullets. But if we can get somebody who's good all the way through, sometimes doing what you might characterize as clerk work is valuable in the broader project management sense. But if if we're not getting anybody, then it might be either going to a C or it might be splitting it out and saying, maybe we need some of these tasks to come out and change the job description. But I'd say that's an assessment after you have the job on the street for a month or whatever it is and had a chance to either see the resumes and or interview.
Yeah, I could be back here in a couple, in a month and a half and saying, you know, we we tried, we we went out and and so I'm I'm not.
And we'll say no then.
And I'll say, Cassie, I'm like.
I know, because it will be budget season. And that you don't see on the sheet.
You said the right thing, you admitted that.
Absolutely. It's money.
My contract expired.
You just signed a new one. It's a brand new mid-manager's contract. Three years, yep. So effective uh July one, so uh brand new. And so the, but I will say the uh the union's been great. They've been working with us to uh, they they see the need for the position. So um so, you know, they're comfortable at the B level. If we do move to a C, I would have to talk with them as well and get approvals. I don't know, just see where we are.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I got trust in you, your judgment, so.
Yeah, we don't vote on this, right?
This is.
You have to vote to the new position. You're not uh paying.
Make a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve creating a project manager position within the Public Works Department.
Second. I don't think there's any further discussion. Those in favor, all right, so move. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
You're the other town manager that never came here.
Well, while you're here.
Yeah.
Um, we'll be going to the next day.
All right.
Couple of things. One is um just a reminder, and we talked about it a little bit before, that there is the Capitol meeting tomorrow, ten A M. It's in the old V N A space, the main conference room, so off the rotunda here.
Nice.
It uh it will be recorded, as I said earlier, and I will email out to all of you the recording. You're all welcome to attend in person or Zoom, your choice, or listen to the recording. Second thing, so I mentioned earlier, the V N A will be coming to the meet, the V N A director will be here next month. The question for all of you is, to make it productive, what would you like her to cover? Be prepared to address when she comes here and or the town manager, who will be here next month as well. Will the, because you're still paying for the yeah, so we sold them. Through the end of the calendar year. Will that person be here as well? Oh, I we can chat. She's been the one, she or he has been the one controlling the. No, E E has been running it. The consultant is working uh about ten hours a week overseeing to make sure that everything is running right, the filings are in, that E E's doing things and serving as a sounding board. The reality is E E, E E's been running the shop, but she doesn't have the educational requirements come the end of this calendar. She is on the cusp of finishing the classes and having those requirements. I'm not going to say it's not important, it is. Uh, but I I don't actually think there will be a difference between E E running with V N A when they hand her her degree versus what she's doing now. She's been running it and running it well. You have in the packet the P and L that's there. So not just the revenue numbers, but the actual P and L. They're on pace while the revenue is about about seven thousand dollars year to date, less than what it was last year, or less on pace last year. The bottom line is actually better than it was. So from a financial standpoint, she continues to really challenge her staff, challenge herself to deliver results, and they're delivering really good financial results while at the same time, I'll point out, delivering, continuing to deliver exceptional uh patient service across the board. I say across the board, so two nurses plus E E, so boards thinned out since, you know, from a few years ago, but they're delivering great service and the financial results are better. So she's been there for a while, right? So I'd like to know what she has done differently to close the gap. Back to the first things I like to know.
I think I'd like to know what kind of marketing she's been able to.
These are good questions. I know E E will be able to, I can answer this too, but uh I think E E would be able to. Just, I I'll say, just in my short time here so far, I have seen a great deal of progression on uh on E E and and uh as she has dived into more of the the numbers and uh there's been a greater understanding as far as the expenses. And and to Kevin's point, keeping expenses under control because we do want to grow and we want to market and we want uh to bring in more customers. But at the same time, it it is tough. It's a tough business to compete in and keeping expenses low is another way that we can have that that bottom line continue to improve.
So you're looking into more for D M? Increase revenue without actually increasing the.
Yep.
Okay, so they're working into that now?
Mm-hmm. We've been doing for D M, but I'll let E E, E E has done uh uh digital marketing recently, working with a vendor to increase uh it's like the search ability when you Google something to have Berlin V N A pop at the top. So I'll let E E talk about that, but.
Be excited to share it. I don't think it does really good work.
And actually, years ago, the census used to be like over a hundred. It was like a hundred and twenty. And I think now, I don't even know, it's thirty, you know, on an average, yes.
What is it, like seventy, something like that?
You know, that it's a big difference.
In time versus outcome too.
Yeah.
They still do a bunch of that.
So. That would be.
Did we have everybody?
Challenges with some insurance now.
Yeah.
Versus Medicare, what what's changed from that? Because I know you talked about before that the Medicare aspect of it was getting worse and worse. It went on, it's even going further south and what does that mean for the future?
Okay. In conjunction with her marketing efforts, I'd like to know if she has a uh a methodology to uh evaluate the results.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's one thing to have a program, but to to say that it's actually bringing in people is and and the other thing is, um, I'd like to see her uh her revenue forecast for the end of the year. I'll assume that her expenses are going to be what her expenses are or or no, just tell it, tell her to be both, what her projection is for revenue and expense.
I guess, you know, the other thing is, what if any metrics that she established as her benchmarks or, you know, bellwethers to see how she's doing? I mean, talked for several years, like my my underlying issue is like, what's what's the cost, what's a dollar revenue cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we never really got a good answer on that yet to date, going through the third director now.
We are for how many services? Two or three services, right? Well, we we are a multi, just not with the full-time staff. Can we get a cost breakdown of how much a normal without significant issues or whatever? How much the cost is for, let's call them clients, without breaking any HIPAA laws or whatever, whatnot? Much it gets spent, how many days and how much time they spend with a client? Like, that's how you truly absorb to see like, well, okay, so you made this. Where's like, where's where's the issue?
If you're going to do that, I want to know what revenue we got too.
Exactly. Are we, are we spending two to chase one? That's always been my gripe.
Hmm, yeah. In some ways, sometimes I think the answer is yes, because it's, this is, you know, as you know, the V N A is required for the charter. It's not uh we we, I know this board has worked for a long time to try to uh turn, you know, the the numbers around.
Eight years.
Yeah, and and to your credit, though, and and to the V N A's credit, I think a great deal of progress has been made. I don't know if this is ever going to be a a winner for the town of Berlin, though, and I think that, you know, that's just the reality of it. It's a, it's a very tough business to compete in and as a municipality, we're already a at a disadvantage on that.
I I don't, I don't think anyone, sorry for interrupting you. I don't think, I I personally have never been thinking, oh, this is going to be a great business. We're going to make a ton of money. That was, that's never looking at the numbers. That would be, that would be unrealistic, to be honest with you. Always, it has been. But certainly, like, just don't spend more or hundreds of thousands more. Just try to be level. Like, if you if you spend what you have, good for you, but just don't put us into a.
I have a whole different outlook on it. From my perspective, I think the model, it's not ever, ever another. I I think we have to make a convincing argument to do away with it. And I don't mean do away with the V N A. I mean, do away with the requirements that the charter puts on them. I think if we have a million dollars and you turn these people over to say, give me the best bang for the million dollars, if you don't have to do those things, you could add a lot better services to the people of this town from from a healthcare perspective, whether it be, you know, care managers or whatever, helping people navigate through this nightmare of Medicare and.
Like a social work.
Like, well, yeah, but I mean, if you've ever been into the hospital, you've had to had to get associated with, you know, Medicare, nursing homes, all that kind of stuff.
Navigator.
Navigator, nurse navigator, they call them sometimes. They call them care managers sometimes. Somewhere to go to to navigate through that. I can tell you there's lots and lots of seniors who are totally lost at what to do. And there's no one there. If you get a crap manager coming out of Hartford, the the issue, I I'll take that back. You won't necessarily get a crap manager coming out of Hartford, but I can tell you from experience that if you're there for a week and a half on Friday, it's this care manager. On Saturday, it's this care manager. Monday, this one takes over the ship. There's no continuity in the problem solve. And it's a huge, huge burden on on seniors. That's what these people could be doing. A million dollars would go a long way to helping the seniors in this town doing the stuff. But we can't spend it on that because they're stuck doing this because of the charter.
And that just makes zero sense. So like, I do that for my own parents. Like, I have.
I've done it for my mother and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doing it for somebody else right now.
Yeah.
It, it's a huge burden and, and there's just some people who have no one else. They have no one else. That's my issue. It's not that what they're doing doesn't add value to a certain number of people. It's just a million dollars that could be a lot more valuable to a larger set of people.
Well, thank you. We will share all of this with you, so she can prepare for the meeting and, and be able to speak to all of these.
The other thing is also on, on a number of clients, we used to keep track of the census on a monthly basis. I mean, maybe that's gonna be flat for the whole year, but at least what is it? What are you trying to do? You know, are you trying to maintain a flat census? I'm trying to grow it, just their information.
Yeah, I've stopped asking.
Good.
The other thing I wanna bring up is the third sheet that you have. Uh, last meeting, Sal asked, where is, uh, where did the um, fund balance, the starting fund balance come from? And it, it represents the seventeen million, two sixty-seven, six ninety-nine of the risks and opportunities, the starting point low in seventeen, four seventeen. It's this sheet here. What's the, the one there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I basically bracketed all the items.
Gotcha.
The one thing I will say is the low realistically should be a little lower because I had four hundred thousand to a million. And as you know, you appropriated a million dollars. So really the low should be six hundred thousand lower than that. Um, that number, but that's kind of the starting point.
Okay.
We are getting near the end, knock on wood. Hopefully we're the very final clean-up-the-work-papers questions we've been getting of the audit. So I'm hopeful that by the next meeting, I will have what the actual starting point will be. And we'll start with the audited numbers. Certainly by January, we will. I, I, we don't, we have to do some work because we, we are, we are. Everything is there, so. Um, but that's, that's how where the numbers came, what, what they represent. So.
We don't have that grant we just won in there? And then we have to put up a hundred thousand for that grant that we just got?
I would say that a hundred sixty thousand, it's typically twenty percent.
It's, this, this was, it wasn't twenty percent because it's uh, the connectivity grants only require. The uh, they don't do design, so it's, it's just the, the soft costs, not the, you know, the hard costs, so.
Yeah.
Who's picking where these sidewalks go? That's my question.
Um, it was a, it was an application that the council approved and it was uh, to address sidewalks by Hubbard. And uh, Griswold School and so.
Okay, those were the two that actually gave me sense.
So, so there, so I think, cause actually the mayor was talking to me right uh, before the county meeting just now. And I think there was some confusion because there's two, there were two sidewalk grants. One of them, some of them may not have made all the sense. This was a different grant. This was, this was through the state, through D O T. And the connectivity grants, we, we wrote specifically uh, with schools in mind to connect students to be able to walk to school better. Which is I think why we won the grant, because it was competitive and I know of other towns that applied and didn't receive the grant. So I think um, I actually complimented the, one of the grant writers for naming the grant, the routes, you know, to schools. The Hubbard and Griswold schools, because I think that's one of the reasons why we got the grant. So uh, yeah, it's, it's for the schools. It's not, that's, there's another, there's another grant, which is a carbon reduction. Save routes to school grant also, but that's federal funds and that was like a six million dollar grant. And the council talked a lot about weaning out different streets because it was too much and there was a twenty percent match on that. And that's probably what you're thinking of.
Yeah, that could, that could go away. Nobody would really care.
And, and.
I mean, there were sidewalks on dead-end streets.
And it might, it might, you know, so right now, just as far as where that project is. We went out uh, to bid for uh, design work, just to, to do the design. And Chris Edge is leading the panel to interview the, the uh, the applicants. And then um, we still may be scaling back the streets. So the, you and the council will, will be able to see what streets, but I know the council felt, had similar feelings and. And really wanted to scale it back. When we apply for grants, we're gonna always try to get as much money as we can. But we can also say no. And, and um, they've confirmed uh, that we can scale back and still get some of the grant. And so there is a limit for how low we can go before we, we just, you know, pass entirely. But uh, if, if you wanna do that, we have that ability to. So when we do like, okay, connect the schools, blah, 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 anybody doing analysis as to, okay, how many kids would this take off buses? And they'll actually walk to school? It's just, was there a return on this investment? I know it's quote-unquote not our money, but it is my money, you know, it's, we're paying it in taxes. It's, we do consult with the Board of Ed. And so the Board of Ed will talk with Ashley about um, you know, bus routes. Where, because they do get requests for pa, from parents who, you know, may want their kids to be able to walk to school. How come we don't have sidewalks in this neighborhood? Or why does sidewalks end and not connect? So well, there, yeah, I mean, there is a, there are guidelines put out there that says if you live like within a half a mile of school. And there are sidewalks, you walk to school, not do you wanna walk to school, you walk to school. It should be a very cut and dry analysis to say, yeah, and then, and then are we gonna take two things? One is, I don't want sidewalks in front of my house, but I don't have to shovel stupid things. Cause they don't go, go anywhere. Plus you're gonna take some of my land away, even though it's your right of way or whatever. So that aspect of, of things too. What, you know, am I really gonna send my? It, it, it was interesting to read that thing. I forgot what, I don't remember the thing, but it was, it was a little bit outrageous. Cause I said like, you know, a kid six years old was expected to walk in excess of a mile. What parent's gonna let their six-year-old kid walk on a sidewalk a mile to school? Cause that's Berlin. Yeah.
Not if there was a stop sign.
It has to be.
Crazy things. We, we had it.
Wow.
It was crazy stuff.
Uh, I just drive my kids.
Well, I, I don't, like a lot of parents these days would let their kids walk to school, not at six years old. It's gotta be mine.
We didn't know back then.
No. Be home by five o'clock.
I don't know if there's any questions. I didn't go over the fin, the financial condition is, is strong, it's solid. Um, so if there's any questions.
No. Any questions? All good. Well, thank you. Favorit? Thank you.
Thank you guys. Well, we're gonna be seeing a lot more of each other soon.
As long as we're in agreement.